Okay.
About the what?
You know, I was really doing well.
I got the same letter. I'm taking care of it. I mean, you can, you can.
I look.
Yeah, it's fine. This came as a result of the meeting that we had about the.
You know, personally.
Yeah, that corridor study. No, they said they were gonna get us a, weren't they gonna get us a budget? That we could discuss that we were gonna, we were theoretically gonna share the cost. And at that point, if we knew what that was, then we were gonna talk. Yeah, but I can follow, I can follow up with the roster tomorrow. Yeah, no, I'll read out to them.
Oh, okay.
Which was mine.
Sure. Oh, jeez. It would've been nice if today she just sat down and talked to you before the memo came out. That's the, that's the proper way to do it.
Right. I know my contract ends June 30th. So you always know you may be laid off.
You have a year to your contract, right?
Yeah. No, it's grant.
It's a grant, okay. Yeah, when I, when I was teaching for Rutgers, uh, they used to give you a year to your contract. You'd sign one in July and it would be good till June 30th.
Right.
Okay, and.
I don't sign anything.
Okay. I used to sign it.
Yeah, no, there's not, there's no, we have no protection.
Well, I was a.
Your, your ambitions.
Ad hoc professor. So it was like.
I get letters that say Professor Bruce.
I know, I know. I hear how you think I feel.
I guess I could take them to somebody.
Yeah. I told them American Legion, DFW.
Any of them.
Any of vets. They have basically a bunch of five hundred dollars or whatever they want to spend.
Next Tuesday, you have the thing at break.
Vietnam veterans, everybody else. Yep, no. It's five, it's five hundred dollars, so it's five hundred dollars.
Is this the fourteen?
Yeah, it's on the floor.
And they didn't come back and ask for anything different.
Oh, the fourth, yeah.
You know the fourth thing?
I saw Walt the other day at business association thing.
Okay.
But I could've gone to the school and give out the awards for, uh, Republican public.
Another sad part of being a Republican.
See waking up.
It was nice.
I knew what else.
You know, like we were going back to this.
Yeah. I've sat through many of graduations.
Yeah.
Simple, but it's not simple. We don't have a driveway or garage. We have to come. If they have a driveway or garage, they need to put it on their own property. I don't think there's anything, it's like special parking permits.
Why would you come back?
Because even if we have a driveway or, you know, the one we did down on. They have. That was an exception. Right. But other than that, we just don't hand them out like cans. And that's why I explained to her, but I told her that, uh, everything's in order.
Trash course in election day. Yeah, both on the historic committee too.
What's that?
Both on the historic committee too.
Yeah.
So I see them there. They might teach us how to do those procedures, but when something goes wrong.
One more meeting we have to sit by.
The machines and the tables.
Takes, yeah, takes too many meetings we have to sit down and discuss. The ordinance has to be reused, and she was. You're familiar with 130 Gibbs Avenue, the electric car. I just, I spoke, I went down, I spoke to one of them and I went down. Seemed like very nice, very understandable people. So.
No, why?
I saw, I saw what she has, they have set up. I just told her, I said, "We can't do anything about special, special parking for her."
Six to eight hours.
But not now, I said, "All this has to be legislated before you, since things like."
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have to come.
She says her, the biggest problem she has is in the summertime. I said, "Well, we won't get legislation done." I said, "We only have three meetings between now and sometime."
Parking permits and stuff.
And it's not. Plus, we have to talk about, we have to talk about, come up with what the ordinances must say.
I would, especially in summer, especially down there.
The fact that if you have a driveway or garage, you don't get, you, you, you don't, you don't get special parking. You don't get a post at the curb. But if, but if you have, if you have, if you have a situation where you don't have a driveway, you know, let's say we want to do what we had on Bay Avenue, Revolution. But you know, the thing is, it's, it's true, we're not gonna stop people from buying electric cars. So we need to address it.
Not, yeah, that's not.
And we address it. You, you and I are gonna address it right now, so, yeah.
Are you?
But we need some, we need to talk. Yeah, because you know what?
Get back in the room.
Parking station.
Oh, really?
To touch something.
They can have their own, they can have their own.
Wow, that's cool.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's on the street, you know? Call, call up you to have.
So when are you going down there? All right.
We, yeah, well, we have to. It's all, it's all maybe like, say, we have to talk to Jeff and what our responsibility is.
Yeah.
But the legal responsibility.
Flying too long.
A lot of things, so she, and I explained that to her.
California Mondays.
Well, we have, we have branch. Probably.
Yeah, we have.
I think quarters.
And I say, this apartment.
And they have the gentleman there.
Right.
Check out the camel.
My name, Jason's already looking. Sister, like I told her, it's not something.
This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
The flag on the United States of America. Considered Republicans, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bruno?
Here.
Councilmember DePantholius?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here.
Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, our CFO Castrell, City Clerk Samuelson, Deputy Clerk Heath, and City Solicitor Smith, and our City Engineer, Mr. Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna please ask everyone to please speak right into your microphone so that you can be heard throughout the room. But you do need to talk right into the mic so that people in the back of the room can also hear us. Thank you. Anyone have any communications to offer? On the agenda, it says EDAC cannabis study, but we're gonna do that under, it's actually under Committee Reports because it's an economic development report. Hearing none. Mayor?
Good evening, thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being involved with the Memorial Day Parade. It was one of the great successes we've had. The Veterans Advisory Commission, who had put it together, worked with all the veteran service organizations within the town, and I thought it turned out very well. Uh, it was a great crowd on the streets as we walked through town, and the service was very nice. We were lucky enough to get Lieutenant Colonel Rick Fontana, who is the son of former Mayor Fred Fontana, to be our, uh, our guest speaker. And Rick was a C-5M pilot and also flew C-17s. So, and again, I want to thank everybody, especially our police and Public Works, who did a lot of work making sure that everything was ready for the service and the parade. This Saturday, June 11th, from 10 to 2, the Historical Society is going to have an open house right here at the Historical Society Building, so I encourage everyone to come out and see that. As I understand, the, uh, the artifacts that we got from the crew of USS Summers will be on display, and I'm looking forward to it. Also, coming up next Saturday is the Brutus Flute, Fluke Tournament, which was flounder, striper, and blues. It benefits the Elks and Ian Vets. And anybody's interested, please contact Walt Gregory or call Land Vets at 526-4356. And that's all I have this evening. Hey, excuse me, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Frost? Mr. Smith?
Uh, just briefly.
Into your microphone, please. I don't know. Is it? There you go.
It's on tonight, but, uh, just so you understand, it was actually part and parcel of another ordinance that we amended relative to the construction office and the duties of the, uh, construction officer, the, uh... And, and what we did was we took this portion out of that section, so it really didn't have a whole lot to do with it, and we moved it over to the sewer utility section. So I just wanted to explain to everyone why, why it's on and what it is. It, uh, actually, we did away with our, uh, the Sewers Authority and became a sewer utility, I think, in 2009. And I just needed to look at some of the other regulations that were referenced and incorporated into, uh, the ordinances concerning the sewer utility. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Snyder?
Uh, yes. There you go. Uh, Phase Two of the Westlandic State Aid Project has started and will continue. Paving is anticipated for full, both phases in July. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Committee Reports. Anyone have a Committee Report to offer?
You can ask the President.
Yes, Mr. Dill.
I'd just like to announce that the Planning Board is meeting next Wednesday on June the 15th. Any agenda other than the normal things are applications for the resolution referring to the Groveland Avenue Audi redevelopment project. And the other one is, uh, the development of the Shore Road and Sunset Avenue projects will be discussed at the, and voted on at the Planning Board, uh, next Wed, next Wednesday, June 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Committee Reports?
With, um.
Mr. Owen?
Recreation. We had a healthy discussion about the dog park, and there was a lot of opposition to where the dog park was gonna be placed, um, with that location. And there was a lot of good argument as to why it shouldn't be over behind the hockey courts. And then we also discussed, uh, the tennis courts and pickleball. And I wasn't the only one in the room. It was also Mr. McCary and Mr. McGuigan, and it was, uh, it was good, good discussions.
So the committee's gonna continue with their research?
Yes.
Economic Development, I'm gonna ask our Chair, John Helbig, to come up and give us an update.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Helbig, Chairman of our Economic Development Advisory Committee. As I've reported to Council before, we've been working on this issue relative to cannabis in our community for over a year now. As everybody is probably aware, we followed in the news what adjacent communities have been dealing with, the new rules being published by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And I have to be honest with you, after the constitutional question passed in November of 2020, the beginning of last year, I offered to our committee whether or not we should take the issue up as a question for Summers Point. How is this gonna affect Summers Point in the future? Should we allow cannabis and cannabis-related businesses to locate here? Or what, what type, if we do? And what are some of the other regulations that should be put in place? So, given that, we've, and I think Council President Johnston and, and Councilman Owen can reiterate how many hours of discussion we've had on this topic. It's a difficult topic. People have strong feelings about it. We've met with, I went out and actually visited the Botanist Facility out in Egg Harbor Township that you may have read was recently licensed as an alternative treatment center. So they're open as a retail facility, the one at Offshore Commercial Park. We had the Director of Security from the Botanist come in and talk to us. Mr. Smith was good enough to attend one of our meetings and come in and go through the legal aspects, which are complicated, I, I think he would admit. There's a lot of moving parts to the regulations. So each community, while the state has provided a framework through this Cannabis Regulatory Committee, or Commission, rather, it's, they're really leaving it up to the municipalities to decide what's best for your own community. So given that, we kicked it around a lot within our committee. Beyond that, we put a survey online. If you recall, I did bring the survey in and Council authorized us to put it on the city website, which we did. Uh, I provided those results to City Council. Basically, we kept it on the website for about 49 days overall. Initially, we were gonna keep it on for 45 days. We had some technical glitches in the beginning, so we kept it on a few more days. We had 127 responses at the end of 49 days. And basically, what I did, I had provided an email to you dated May 31st in which I included a page from that survey along with the number of responses to each of the questions that we posed. Without getting down into the weeds, I'll, I'll report that the overall results were about 68% in favor of allowing some type of cannabis-related business in the city, and about 33% prohibited, continue to prohibit cannabis and cannabis-related businesses. So it's, seems like it mirrors what, what happened in November of 2020, which I guess was not a surprise. So given that, I, I reached out to our EDAC voting members. We have nine voting members on EDAC. And I knew that, you know, we, we've been, not slow walking, but we've been very deliberative, I think, in our, in our discussions and terms. We've seen what's going on in other communities, you know, where they have been, there's been a lot of contentious meetings about how to handle this issue. Our idea was to try and research it as best we could and present to Council our findings, which is what I'm doing here this evening. So basically, I, I put it to our voting members, a straw vote. Basically, option one would be to keep the status quo. Cannabis and cannabis-related businesses should continue to be prohibited from operating in the city. Option number two, Council should move forward by having City Council and EDAC work with our City Engineer and Planner to recommend specific locations slash zoning districts where a business could potentially operate, and drafting a preliminary ordinance regulating potential cannabis business operations. Of our nine voting members, eight voted in favor of the second to move forward. One voted in favor of continuing the status quo. So that's what I'm here reporting to you this evening. We have met with other folks during this process. We had a group from InVision who are doing a cannabis dispensary in Abseken. Abseken is providing three retail licenses. So one of the groups that has procured a resolution of support from Abseken came in to talk to us about how the operation would run. But we really didn't want to go any further than that. Basically, all I'm saying to tonight is, I guess, the, the consensus of EDAC is that we should not close the door on the issue. It's not to say that we should allow it or what form it should be allowed, but we should not close the door on it. So that's, that's basically what I have this evening. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
My, I will, I definitely commend EDAC. They were very, very thorough and looked at all sides of this issue and spent many, many hours in discussion, so, um... My thought is that I think, uh, maybe we need an ad hoc committee of Council members to decide what Council wants to do, um, with the, with the advice of EDAC. And we can certainly work with Mr. Helbig and... If anyone would like to volunteer, yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate you've done an admirable job getting the, um, and, and it certainly was difficult getting some sort of, uh, public opinion. But do we, do we have any idea, uh, you know, what the economic impact would be? And I don't mean that just in the sense of the tax dollars. What would the economic impact be, whether it's positive or negative? And how do, and, and can we determine that, whether it's positive or negative on the rest of the business community or on future business community or, or, you know what I mean? You know what I'm saying is?
No, no.
That's really, uh, you know, while, while you've gotten this opinion and we have the opinion of the, of your committee, um, you know, I, you know, the, the outreach, while difficult, is, is not as much as maybe we would hope for. So, you know, it's hard, it's hard if, if I'm, if I'm gonna make a judgment and vote one way or the other based on that, I, I'd need to see what maybe the impact, economic impact would be, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, you know, Sean, it's, it's a difficult, I think, given it's such a new industry.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure there may be studies that have been done in other states where cannabis has been legal for recreational cannabis, is legal for extended periods. You know, and you're correct. I mean, what you tend to get is just the positive impact of cannabis business alone.
Right, right.
The impact on businesses.
And, 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 you know, we both have heard it, and everyone's here have heard it, that, oh, well, we don't want marijuana sales. It'll bring down the neighborhood, or this or that. So, I mean, i- is there studies out there, like in, in other states or in other communities, where that impact has been, you know, measured? And I, you know, I don't know, and I, I don't know whether that's a hard task or, or a task worth undertaking.
That's the, that's the complication. You can read one thing on one side of the fence one day, and then you, the next day, it's the other side. So it's so hard to.
Yeah, we had the, the head of security, who was a retired state policeman, uh, come in and talk to us from, and he talked a little bit about, um, you know, there is a lot of negative stereotypes, which, you know, obviously is, is going to happen, and, and it doesn't mean some of that isn't true. But his point was, you know, um, these are very professional-run operations, and the city would have a lot of control over how they're operated. Answering your question, I, I don't have the answer for that.
Sure.
We might be able to find that out.
And please, I don't, and I'll tell you this later. I don't, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, it's, it's fine, yeah. It's, I don't wanna be on the spot.
I have a question, uh, Madam President, John. Bringing something like this into the city, um, we all know what the downside could be in terms of, it's a drug, right? And going a little bit further and looking at the revenue, is there a portion of this revenue, and you may, you may, in your experience in looking at other locations, a piece of that is going towards helping individuals who have an issue with drugs? And so that if it's sold in Summers Point, and we find someone in Summers Point, and we realize that this is something that's become a bad habit in there now, is a piece of their profits, though, this professional organization, gonna be allocated to making sure that we address any type of issue around habitual users?
You know, that's a good question, and I don't know the answer to that. You know, the, the revenue that the city would make from it, clearly, that, that's collected and that's used as part of our general revenue. The state has pushed, you know, and everybody's read how the evolution of this cannabis law came into effect. I mean, there's a decriminalization element to it, there's a social equity element to it. And whether you believe in that or not, um, I, I think there is an attempt, anyway, on the state's part to try to alleviate or de-stigmatize some of the issues with recreational cannabis use through treatment, through, because, I mean, it's clear in here, like if a, if a dispensary was licensed to operate, and let me just say that first, like, none of this goes forward until these facilities are licensed through this Cannabis Regulatory Commission. The, 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 the city of Summers Point, if, if Council opted to move forward, provides the, the, the details on the ground. How, how many, where, hours of operation, how large it can be, you know? All the controlling issues that are normally done through the planning or zoning board. Obviously, it's not the city's obligation to meet any, um, you know, addiction issues or, you know, that's, that's above our pay grade, you know? But, um, I, to answer your question, I don't know whether, you know, some of the money the state's taken in, I guess everybody saw the, the headline in, in Craig's newspaper the other day, you know, the first month, they took in $24 million in recreational sales. I would hope some of that is going towards.
Yeah, I, I would think we, we need to make sure that happens because obviously, these are citizens that we have to, I think, protect from certain situations. And if they're bringing in that much money, then a portion of that should go towards helping a person who may just, you know, not be able to handle it properly, that's all.
Yeah, no, and, and you know, the, I'll be honest with you, you know, and, and I think Council President Johnston would, would reiterate this, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the buzz you get from the, the folks who operate cannabis facilities are, they avoid the big questions.
Right.
The social questions. Their, their response is, hey, delivery is gonna be legal everywhere in New Jersey, so folks who live in Summers Point are gonna be using it, and you're just not gonna get the revenue, you know? So their, their point is, it's here, whether it's here as a black market product or it's here legally.
Right.
You're gonna, that's their biggest, is you're gonna lose out.
Understood.
Now, whether, maybe we want to lose out. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think we should, um, if, if everyone wants, agrees to it, let's put together a Council Committee to work with Mr. Helbig. It sounds like there's still a lot of questions and a lot of things that need to be answered and so everybody can form an educated opinion, and I don't know. What else to move forward with this, but.
Madam President, I agree. And I recently learned another aspect of it, that when, um, people get prescriptions from their doctors, they're very specific, and most people go to the township, the nearest place to, to get that, but they don't have what doctors are prescribing. So you have to go to North Jersey to get it, and you can't get it through the mail. So it's another aspect to look into, so that, you know.
Who would like to be on the committee?
I would.
I would.
I would. Can I throw under the bus? Mr. DePamphylis, you've been a part of the conversations at EDAC. Would you like to...
I will do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay.
I have a feeling to get run out.
Good pick.
And I'm sure Mr. Helbig will...
Yep, we'll get him up to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Helbig, thank you very much for your...
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 26 meeting, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, May. May 26. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Ordinances, number 14.
Ordinance number 14 of 2022, an ordinance amending section 212-18 of Article 7 of Chapter 212, Sewers, to identify duties of the superintendent of Public Works relative to inspections of grease, oil, and sand interceptors for restaurants in the city.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was the first reading for ordinance number 14.
Resolution number 131 of 2022, awarding bid for the 2022 Stormwater Improvements Phase 1 rebid. Resolution number 132 of 2022, authorizing agreement with the Atlanta County Improvement Authority. Resolution number 135 of 2022, authorizing executive session regarding affordable housing issues and negotiation or redevelopment plan and agreement. And resolution for the consent agenda, it's resolution number 133 of 2022, liquor license renewals. Resolution number 134 of 2022 is rejecting bids for Dog Park. Resolution number 136 of 2022, amending rules and regulations of the Summers Point City
May I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only, please?
I'll make that motion, Council President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. If you wish to speak, please step up and state your name and address for the record for resolutions only.
Motion to close the public portion on resolutions only.
I have a second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on resolutions. Resolution number 131.
Resolution number 131 of 2022, awarding bid for the 2022 Stormwater Improvements Phase 1 rebid, namely, West Bay Construction, Inc. of Absekin, New Jersey.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 131 is approved. Number 132.
Resolution number 132 of 2022, authorizing agreement with Atlanta County Improvement Authority for the administration of a program income for previous housing rehabilitation grants.
May I have a motion, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 132 is approved. Number 135.
Resolution number 135 of 2022, authorizing executive session, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation in which the public body is or may become a party, any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer, the nature of the matters to be discussed described as fully as possible while undermining the need for confidentiality, advice of counsel and attorney-client communication regarding the status of legal and procedural issues pertaining to potential redevelopment of Block 1007 lots 1, 2, and 3, including the negotiation of the terms and conditions of a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment agreement, and affordable housing obligations in compliance with the Summers Point Municipal Code, Chapter 69, and the April 26, 2018 Court Approved Settlement Agreement between the city and Fair Share Housing Center.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Just in the interest of everyone's time, we'll go into executive session at the end of the meeting, so everybody doesn't have to hang out in the hallway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 135 is approved. A consent agenda? Could I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Council President, I'll make the motion for the consent agenda.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved.
I need to take that out.
Sorry. I'm just reading. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? Hearing none? Anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss? Okay. Mr. Frost, can we discuss the bills?
This evening, we have bill issued, $41,628.31.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open for public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Now, just please remind everybody, in the interest of everyone having time to speak, please keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
No. Dale Primus, 57 Village Drive. Ladies and gentlemen, Madam President, how about 45 South Villies Drive? What have you found out from the building inspector? Have you found out what his problem was? That house is a disaster? Does anybody know about that? Is no one going to do anything about that? I was here six weeks ago, and somebody said they were going to investigate that? I mean, are we going to have a problem here?
We...
45 Village Drive, this place, it's got broken windows, boarded up stuff, there's kids over there, there's trash on the lawns, the place is not kept? I mean, the building permit was launched in 2006. In 2008, he put up a partial structure with no siding on it. The reason it has siding on it is because I went to the building inspector and I raised holy hell. That's why it's on it. The guy didn't fix the parapet laws. He got black mold all over the place. It's a hell hazard.
I could have code enforcement.
You have to look into this. This is serious. This is supposed to be a good area. He got Jack Wallace, Liz Wright, you know who Jack Wallace is, right?
Yes.
He was right next to him.
Mr. Frost will call code enforcement first thing in the morning.
Let me finish here. The people on the corner, they said if they knew this was going to go on here for a time, they never would have bought there. This is an embarrassment. This council should be embarrassed. You should never let something like a house with broken windows, especially where it is.
You're right.
Is that what I'm getting at? I'm not trying to be facetious here.
No.
Am I right? Is something going to do something?
We will definitely call code enforcement first thing in the morning.
Council President, we can, Mr. Frost will call code enforcement, and we also have a committee, a council committee, that can also follow up on it, so that we can have an answer, maybe quite possibly by the next council meeting.
And it's 45...
45 Villies Drive?
No, South.
South?
South Villies Drive.
South Villies Drive.
I don't understand. I don't understand why this is a problem here. You guys have all the power in the world to fix this, and you've done nothing. It's sat there. I don't know how many people...
Excuse me, we'll take care of it. Mr. Frost will call first thing in the morning. We'll talk to code enforcement, and we will definitely reach out to you before the next council meeting.
I got another question.
Yes.
How come there's a special council meeting to hire somebody? They hired a policeman. Was there a special council meeting that someone was hired? Is that true? Is that right?
No. I don't believe so.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it was. Yes.
Yes, there was.
It had to do with the new legislation, right?
Correct.
It had to do with the new legislation that was passed at a regular meeting. The date for that to start had not started yet, so we couldn't do it. So we did it the following week.
I don't understand what you're saying, that the date for some registration that has to do with...
The legislation that was passed, and Mr. Smith can probably, he's going to read it to you.
Our council is going to tell us something here? What was that?
It was advertised. We didn't sneak in a meeting. It was advertised.
Council President.
I'm not saying the other thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Everything is loaded. Okay. You say so, sir.
Every once in a while, we have to have a special meeting to get our business taken care of, and that's what we did. It's advertised, just like every other meeting. It's posted. It's not, there's nothing wrong with that, so thank you for your comments.
I think there are other areas I'd like to get into, but...
I'm sorry, but your three minutes, I'm sorry.
I guess you have some other time.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, may I say something?
Yes.
I just, for informational purposes only, the person that owns 45 South Villies Drive just happens to have the same last name as I do. They're not related to me.
Okay, well, I'm glad you clarified.
They're not related to me.
Glad you clarified that.
Well, you're, you're, you're...
Okay.
Okay, okay, let's move on, please. I know that's been a problem for years.
Let's move on, please.
They're not related to me. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Seth? No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, sorry. You had your time. It's somebody else's turn now, if they wish to speak.
Patricia Pearson, 587 Lorax, Summers Point, New Jersey.
Into the microphone.
Into the microphone. Here you go. This is so great, right here, so great. Did you all see this? See what it says up here? Summers Point. Did you see it? I want to show this. Did you see this?
Pat, address council, please. Address council, no.
Can you show the public?
Address council, please. You can show them afterwards. You can pass it around the room.
It's the way this council runs.
No, it's, we're just following the rules, that's all.
Yeah, rules, okay. All right, no problem, no problem.
You can talk about it. You just have to tell council about it first.
Good. I wanted to show you that the publicity was fabulous, okay? And this is what we need for publicity for this town, once or twice or three times a month. This happened to be, I'm sure, this was Nick Regina who did this. In fact, I'm absolutely positive it was. Okay, so moving right along, let's see where I was. This threw me off my thing. The parade was very good. People liked it. I want to thank Mr. Joseph McCary, a councilman, for voting. Now, on the tax hike in Summers Point this year, in an inflation year, me and all the other taxpayers, thank you for voting now and having the guts to do that. I also want to tell you that there's a lot of talk around town. I know you people go around town about $4 million for the last meeting. So people are aware that $4 million in bonds were put up, so you better be worried about your, doing the taxes for next year. The other thing is, is this the last meeting of the month for June?
No. The next meeting is June 20.
Did you drop the rule that you used to only have one council meeting in the summer?
That's July and August.
Say what?
July and August. There's only one meeting.
July and August, okay, sorry. All right, that's...
So, yeah.
That one is good. The other thing is, the weeds at House of Booze, whoever sent the citation out or something, did a good...
Code enforcement.
That looks good. It will also help patriots. Now, here's another thing. Last meeting, Scarborough brought in that senior citizen housing project, and the way it was presented was a little rough and a little rushed. And the things I said, I don't take back. But I was talking to a lot of people, a lot of people, and it seems like there's as many pluses for that as there are negatives. And the biggest negative, I guess, would be that the management team, who manages these projects, these government or state projects, sometimes they're going very, very well, and then something will happen, the management team gets bought out, and they get a worse management team, and then things start going down.
I'm sorry, but I have to keep you to your three minutes, otherwise I'll have to let everybody else continue. Your three minutes...
Is up?
Is up, yes.
I had other things to tell you.
If you could just finish your thought and then...
Sorry, no, I had, no, I'll sit down. You know, this three-minute thing is a joke too, and let me tell you why. And Mayor and Howard and them, this is really controlled crazy in this place anymore, because remember when we had the big meetings on the things in Bay Avenue, when the lawyers were here, and it was going on and on till 11 o'clock at night, and terror was up, and everybody was up talking and talking and talking, and they made a three-minute rule? But that is for, not for somebody just trying to tell you something. I'm going to sit down in another minute, but I'll sit down now because I've been challenged. But the bottom line is, you're being too controlling in this place. You're not that ritzied, you're not that smart, you're not that great.
We can't have selective, we can't have selective enforcement either. Everybody gets three minutes, or everybody can talk on that.
I don't care, I'm insulted. I don't like this.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Nobody cares, but that's true. Summers Point Council, how nice it is, isn't it?
That's enough, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Nick DeFolio. I'm in front of council for the second time about the speeding...
Your address, please, I'm sorry.
Jefferson Avenue, Summers Point, about the speeding on Jefferson Avenue. Last time around, I was told it was going to be addressed. The speeding continues. This past Sunday, 26 speeding cars, 125-foot box truck doing 60 mile an hour down Jefferson Avenue. It's really concerning. I have little grandkids that are outside playing on the weekends. I don't lose a grandchild, okay? I lost one grandchild already. I can't afford to lose another one. And now with the Aldi's proposed to be coming up, up the street, all right, and more traffic in the area, something needs to be done about the southbound traffic coming off of Groveland Avenue down Jefferson as a bypass, not the way to the light. Suggestions from council, what we can do? Can we make it a one-way street? Can we stop the traffic from coming down from Groveland Avenue? But something definitely needs to be done. And there's a couple hoopies riding around the neighborhood doing 80, 90 miles an hour. I don't want to get in trouble and chase them, and then get arrested by the police, but something definitely has to be done in Summers Point. A few weeks ago, I had to call the cops. Had a group of kids, they were shooting BBs at the house, they looked like AK-47s, looked like Summers Point SWAT team coming out down Jefferson Avenue after these kids, okay? The area's a little bit out of control right now, and a little concerning. I don't want to be forced to move out of here. I love Summers Point. I work locally. I don't want to pay any more in fuel, the way fuel is right now, so if we can address the problem, I greatly appreciate it.
We will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is William Sparks. I used to live in Summers Point. I've lived in a couple of places in Summers Point. I now temporarily live in Egg Harbor Township. I bought a lot in Summers Point with the plan of building a house, but it looks like I'm going to have to put that on hold. All over a stupid code in the city. It's not the code, really, it's the interpretation of the code that I'm having problems with. So this has gone on for two years now. Two years ago, when I bought the property, the first thing I did, went next door, that was occupied house, house on one side, the other house on the other side was under construction. I usually do this if I buy property. I went over there to introduce myself, let them know what I'm doing, let them know, you know, if they have any questions about what my plans are. Well, I went over there, and I was surprised to see Orville Mathis. And my initial reaction was, oh, that's nice, the ex-chief of police, I'd be right next door to him, blah, blah, blah. However, instead of Orville saying to me, well, welcome to the neighborhood, or what are you going to build there, blah, 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 all he wanted to talk about was leaves, leaves that fall off of trees and blow around the neighborhood. So.
I don't think it's fair to, to tell us what Orville Mathis had to say when he's not here.
Okay, then I'll just say.
Just make, just finish your, your concern, please.
No problem.
Okay.
So shortly after that, I got a call from my neighbor, who complained about the leaves, and he gave me the name of his landscaper, and I said, fine, I'll give him a call. I set it up so that he would come every couple of weeks and cut the grass and the weeds and keep it clean. So I thought that was the end of it. Couple of weeks later, I get a call from a neighbor who said, you better take a look at the tree in front of your house, or in front of your property, that big 35, 40-foot tree, that somebody associated with the neighbor, or the neighbor himself, got onto my property and cut every branch of the tree on the side where his house is, all the way up to the top, 35, 40 feet. I didn't do anything at that other than send the gentleman an email. And I sent him a registered letter. Registered letter finally came back to me, post office said they tried three or four times, and he'd refused it. So then I had a process server serve him the letter, just, just see where we stand. And so I said, the gentleman, why don't we split the cost of a six-foot fence down the middle? Nothing will blow on that side.
Mr. Sparks, I don't, I don't want you to run out of time, but how can we help you? What is the issue? What is the problem that you're having?
Well, it's a couple of problems. One is, when the house was built on the other side of me, gentleman, a couple moved in there, I think they were from Arizona, and one of the first things they did, or first things I got, was a citation saying, clean up my lot. And since he didn't provide any details, I called him up, and I said, what do you mean, clean up my lot? It's clean, I have the landscaper, blah, blah, blah. He said, well, you've got leaves on your lot. I said, okay. So I looked at the code, there's no code in the Summers Point code that says you've got to clean up leaves, or leaves are not allowed. And which is what I thought it was. And after that, I called the, the code enforcement guy in Limwood. I said, do you know, you know what the code is? He said, yeah. I said, well, what do you do when people call you up about the leaves? He said, I tell them there's no code for leaves, and that's the way it is.
What is, what is the address of your property?
It's 810 West Pennsylvania Avenue. It's only a few blocks from here, just on the other side of Route 9.
Okay, this sounds like an issue that needs to be, to go to code enforcement, so can I talk to code enforcement, and then we'll get in touch with you and figure out what the problem is? I.
Yes, he's well aware of it.
Right.
We've gone before Judge Freed. Before Judge Freed even started the hearing.
Right.
He said to the code enforcement guy.
I don't think this is a council issue, is this a council issue? This is a code enforcement issue, so.
Are you still in front of Judge Freed?
I'm sorry?
Are you still in front of Judge Freed?
I don't know. I've, I've filed a claim with the, with the state because of a statement he made directly to the code enforcement guy, telling him to double the number of citations I've got, and if I don't pay them, he's going to see that I get thrown in jail.
I don't think there's anything for us to address here.
I'm just.
I'm taking in front of the criminal.
I'm not bringing this before council.
Miss Wismar, and just find out the status for council, see what's going on.
Okay.
It sounds to me like you have a civil issue with, with a neighbor or neighbors, and that we don't not get involved in. You, you preface this as being a stupid code, and I'm not really sure what code section you're talking about. We're not Limwood or Summers Point, but, but I'll talk to the code enforcement officer, and I'll talk to Miss Wismar to see what the status of the municipal.
Good. The only reason I'm here is not for council to make any decisions.
Well, we can't.
I just want to keep you informed, I don't want anybody to say, you didn't let us know what was going on.
Okay.
Because I think the state's going to get involved, I know that I'm going to be suing two or three people.
Thank you.
So you know what's, what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
As you said, I think no one should comment, I'm not sure who the two to three people are, unless Mr. McWig and Mr. Crawford.
If they happen to have the same name as me, I'm not related to them.
Thank you.
And for the record, most of my relatives aren't speaking to me anyway.
Could I have a motion to close, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Uh, should we?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can pay the bills. We'll take a five-minute recess, just, and we'll be going into executive session.